This meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so where am I going? Because Alderman Budmats is not here. Okay. We will need to, a roll call to establish that a quorum is physically present. Will the clerk please call the roll? Mikhail. Yes. O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sunaika.
Here.
With six, seven present and one absent, there is a physical, sorry, excuse me, six and one absent, there is a physical quorum. Alderman Budmats is to attend remotely. He is prevented from attending the meeting in person this evening due to a personal illness and has requested to attend the meeting remotely pursuant to Section 2-114 of the City Code. As such at this time, I would like to call for a motion to permit Alderman Budmats to attend this evening's meeting remotely.
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika, and second, O'Brien. Any discussion? No discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail. Yes. With, I should be breaking this down. With six in favor and unopposed, Alderman Person Budmats is permitted to attend remotely. Alderman, Alder, excuse me, Alder Person Budmats will be able to participate in the meeting in the same capacity as those members physically present and will be called and counted for any vote taken during the meeting. Alderman Budmats, are you able to hear us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
All right. Members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable channel. All right. The first order of business is to approve minutes from two previous meetings. February 21st, 2023, Committee of the Whole Meeting, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, for the first.
Second.
And second was Alderman Reyes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, will the, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and zero opposed, the minutes are approved. The second City Council meeting minutes from February 28th, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaika, and the second, Alderman Bessassi. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the minutes are approved. There is no motion to deviate. There is no mayor's report. Are there any ward reports this evening? All right, Alderman Sunaika.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to give an update to the council that at the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee meeting last Tuesday, we received over 20 different letters from the Willow Bend Elementary School that requested, requested the environmental committee to review regulations regarding plastics. And so, the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee appreciates the civic engagement of the elementary school and will be engaging in a research session on April 10th, Monday at 6:00 PM, in the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, on the second floor, for anyone else who would like to attend that public event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Person Sunaika. Any other ward reports? So we're going to open the meeting to the public for 20 minutes, and it looks like we have two signatories on the agenda tonight. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the City Council. Per the, per rules of procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. One, any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comment shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such persons shall adhere to the following provisions. Excuse me. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. Profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. And the first signature, that's right, okay. The first signature I have is Lee Firstine, if you want to come up to the podium.
I was not to be disorderly, or be profane.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Lee Firstine, and I reside at 4807 Woodcliff Court. The, I just want to go on public record with concerns that myself and other residents have with the Lober Farms possibility of development. I was in attendance to the meeting for the Nitty Development Group. I was not included in their mailing, though, because I am more than 250 feet from that development, which, that's a really short amount of space. So I felt like that they really, really deleted a lot of residents that really could have and should have been included in that. It was a very, very small segment, segment of our community that is going to be affected. A lot of the concerns that me and other residents have are obviously traffic concerns, our property values, FEMA, emergency, the watershed, all of the things that could and would possibly promote erosion, or anything that would be, you know, not fortunate with that land, that would be in behind us. There are a lot of residents that are going to be affected, and not just Rolling Meadows, but the surrounding residents. And I just really feel like there needs to be more information that's put out there in the, in the neighborhood, in the community, so that people can educate themselves. But those are really some of the biggest concerns that I have and that our neighbors have. Emergency, I think, is, is right up there at the top, because Brockway being that emergency entry and exit, if there were anything that ever happened in that community, a fire, an evacuation, it would not be an adequate way for people to get in and out. And also, there is supposed to be only one entry and exit to that property that they are thinking about developing, all dumping right out onto the one-lane Plum Grove, Meacham Road. So, these are all really, really big concerns that we have. Just wanted to go on public record that those are out there.
Thank you very much. We have a second signature on the list here, Mr. Steve Hollish.
Yeah. I'm going to be disorderly. Hi, my name is Steve Hollish. I live at 4811 Deepwood Lane, and y'all know me. I've been here before, but this is the first time this year, and a long time I've been, haven't been here. It's regarding, same thing, lower property, what Schaumburg is going to do development. We've seen two other corporations come in and want to develop the property, and have all fell short of how Schaumburg wanted to handle the property. They wanted single-hand, single-family homes at a high dollar amount to improve their taxation. Here, they're going to get condominiums, townhomes, and rowhouses, which I don't know if they're taxed the same way, but Schaumburg's got quite a way to go to approve it, and they haven't really said anything yet, because they're saying they haven't got any formal proposal yet, which we all understand. Personally, if they do anything, we've always had the thorn about Brockway. I live on the next street over from where Brockway would terminate, and that means if they did ever open it for emergency traffic, the emergency traffic could never make the turn onto Brockway from Deepwood. That means they'd have to come straight, straight down Brockway, which that road is way too narrow for any kind of emergency vehicles. So it's clearly hasn't been thought of as far as Nitty thinks about it. They just say, we're going to close it, it's got to be emergency vehicles, and no concern. So I think Rolling Meadows has to look at that before Schaumburg comes out and says, yeah, we're going to approve it, and Brockway's going to emergency exit. That's a lot of money for Rolling Meadows to step up to the plate so soon to foot the bill for a road that may be just used for emergency vehicles. Then it's going to go of, will Rolling Meadows develop it for sidewalks? In conjunction, they might as well, if they develop it for a widened road, put sidewalks in, put gutters in. We all know the residents on that street do not want any of that. In the past, they've opposed it, and I'm sure they would come out strong, saying they don't want to widen that street. Anyway, there's a lot of issues out there, and I'm sure more will get to light as Schaumburg comes out of the woodwork and says, oh, we're going to approve this. So, Rolling Meadows can be aware. I, I know that the city manager knows about it, Public Works Director knows about it, and going forward, they'll keep you informed on what you should know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to go to pending ordinances. First one, ordinance number 23-07, approve the elimination of cash bonds in connection with building permits and zoning applications. In for second reading, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika.
Second.
Thank you, Alder Person O'Brien. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Excuse me. With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to the consent ordinances. The next item on the agenda are consent ordinances, and for first reading, it consists of two items, Items B and C. Does any Alder Person wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares that in order for one motion to consider the two ordinances in one motion without debate, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika.
Second.
Thank you, Alder Person Beniziano. Ordinance number 23-00, authorize reserving the city's 2023 home rule private activity bond volume cap, in for first reading, and ordinance number 23-00, approve deferring the imposition of the municipal push tax for the city of Rolling Meadows until October 31st, 2023. The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll? Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second On to new business, there's, there a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika.
Second.
And Alder Person O'Brien for the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions. It consists of five items, Items E through I. Does any Alder Person wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions?
Item E.
Alderman Bessassi is removing item E. Any one else? So the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the four resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika, for the first.
Second.
And Beniziano for the second. Starting with item F. Resolution number 23-R-34, approve the installation of 887 pedestrian walkway light fixture lamps with Patrick Electrical Service in an amount of $12,500. Item G, resolution number 23-R-35, award a three-year contract for janitorial services in fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2025 with two annual renewal options, crystal maintenance services plus corporation for $56,100 per year. Item H, resolution number 23-R-36, authorize the purchase of a 2023 Rayco stump grinder and trailer from Alexander Equipment in a not to exceed amount, not to exceed the amount of $67,000. And item I, resolution number 23-R-37, authorize an agreement with the Giant Maintenance and Restoration Inc. to perform hydrant painting in a not to exceed amount of $24,978. The question is, shall the resolutions, the four resolutions, be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the resolutions are adopted. So, resolution number 23-33, approve a contract for the purchase of 4th of July fireworks display to MAD Bomber, was pulled. I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika, and Beniziano for the second. Alder Person Bessassi, you asked that this resolution be pulled, so...
Yeah, I'm actually in favor of it. I was just wondering, in the past, we've typically gotten a discount by doing a multi-year contract, and this doesn't seem to be a multi-year.
Manager Sabo, can you say that?
Happy, happy to speak to this. So, in communication with the fireworks, fireworks vendor, there's been recent price volatility in the fireworks raw materials and their purchasing. They were unable to provide for an extended term pricing because of that volatility. At this time, they've agreed to the $30,000 amount that's been proposed, and that we would revisit the pricing in future years based on where the raw material gunpowder pricing is at for the shells themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll? Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail. Yes. With seven in favor and unopposed, that is adopted. That brings the council to other business and reports. There, oh, I do have an appointment. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's appointments, which consists of two reappointments. Does any Alder Person wish to remove any appointee from the reappointment list for discussion? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the reappointments in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Sunaika, for the first.
Second.
And Alderman Reyes for the second. We have the fire pension board, reappointment of Molly Talkington, and the police pension board, the reappointment of Mark Nenini. The question is, shall the reappointments be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll? O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunaika.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the appointments are approved. There are no mayor's proclamations tonight. There is no city clerk report tonight, and that brings us to the city staff reports. We're going to start first with the community items of interest, Mayor Sabo, or Manager Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Stick with the current title of city manager. Appreciate the faith that you put in me in that role. Good evening, City Council as well. Few items to note for this evening. The Rolling Meadows Community Development Department is seeking qualified applicants to serve as the department's next clerk typist position. This is a role that assists with the front counter staffing, as well as permitting to support our, our community development efforts. The city also has seasonal positions for clerical maintenance and an engineering intern opportunity in the Public Works Department. Applicants must be 18 or older and can apply by visiting the city's website at citi rm.org. For the upcoming April 4th, 2023 Consolidated Election, early voting will be taking place from March 20th through April 3rd. Voters who participate in early voting may vote in person at the Rolling Meadows Courthouse, room 238, located at 2121 Euclid Avenue. For more information or additional locations, visit cookcountyclerkil.gov/elections. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in the St. Patrick's Day Step Campaign from March 10th through the 19th. Officers will be actively enforcing DUI violations, speeding, unlawful use of cell phone while operating a motor vehicle, seat belt enforcement, and child safety seat violations. If alcohol will be a part of your St. Patrick's Day festivities, please don't get behind the wheel impaired, rather plan ahead and ensure you have a safe ride home. To raise funds for the Illinois Special Olympics this past Sunday, the Rolling Meadows Police Department did a polar plunge into the icy waters at Main Beach and Crystal Lake. The team raised over $3,000 for these amazing athletes. A special thank you to all participants, and especially to Officer Pak for his outstanding dedication to this and other Special Olympic fundraising events. Lastly, as a quick note, just wanted to comment on, on Lober Farm and make a quick note to, to both the residents who spoke this evening, as well as individuals who are listening to our, our meeting tonight. The city is aware that there is a developer seeking to potentially redevelop the Lober Farm site. The city has communicated with the Village of Schaumburg our interest to be included in some of the considerations and review processes of that development. However, I just want to put out there that that development is located entirely, or I should say, the property is located entirely within the Village of Schaumburg, and subject to the review and approval authorities of the Village of Schaumburg Board of Trustees, as well as their plan commission and any other entity that may be reviewing that application. Accordingly, in accordance with, with the Open Meetings Act, the, the plan review process will likely go through public processes with the Village of Schaumburg, which are open to the public and at which members of the public are welcome and able to make comments or testimony if it's a, a public hearing. Certainly, the city will continue to remain in communication with Schaumburg if that application is received by the village, and, and will seek some review and opportunities to weigh in on, on any sort of development proposal on that Lober Farm property. However, at this time, an application has not been received by the Village of Schaumburg to our knowledge, and at such time that one is received. If one is received, we'll certainly maintain our professional communications and relationship with Schaumburg and, and request some opportunities to review those documents as well.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, on to February 2023 New Business Report. Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm pleased to announce we have seven new businesses during the month of February. Among them is new restaurant Kong Dog, located at 1649 West Algonquin Road, formerly the Big B's location, and also Meadows Dog House, providing doggy daycare and grooming services at 2639 Kirchhoff Road. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And the financial, the January 2023 financial report is in the agenda packet, and if council has any questions, please contact Finance Director Molly Talkington. Which brings us to the March 21st, 2023 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. Manager Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The draft agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting is included in tonight's agenda packet. Two items are included on the draft agenda, which include a review and discussion of the city's policy related to site plan completion prior to granting occupancy for commercial development projects. And second item is a discussion and update for the council on the state's requirement that the, that municipalities complete a lead service line inventory. So this will be an update for the council's information on that requirement. The agenda itself will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and is subject to possibly change before it's posted. However, these two items are tentatively scheduled and likely will be the ones included for the meeting. Thank you.
And right on to March 28th, 2023 City Council Draft Agenda. Manager Sabo.
Thank you once again. So a couple of items are on the March 28th Draft Agenda, which once again is included in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting. Those include a second reading on the two items, the two ordinances which were approved this evening, as well as... as well as, uh, possibly, uh, consideration of regulations of vape shops, tobacco shops, based on a conversation that was held with the city council at a previous committee of the whole meeting. Uh, additionally, we anticipate having a ordinance approving a, uh, planned development, uh, an amendment to the planned development at Arlington Office Park with respect to the special uses that are allowed to operate on that property, as well as a special use and variation for the Marathon property located at three zero zero five Kirchhoff Road. Uh, a couple other items of note include the annual adoption of the twenty twenty-two zoning map, uh, as well as, uh, approval of an agreement for water leak detection services and, uh, the purchase and installation of electric charging equipment for the city hall parking lot. Once again, this is a draft agenda at this time and, and is subject to, uh, posting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, uh, prior to that meeting date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any matters not on the agenda this evening? Alder Person Veneziano.
Thank you. Um, so I did bring it up a couple, a couple meetings back, um, about a property located in Arlington Heights, um, right on the edge of, uh, Fourth Ward, um, and Fifth Ward, the, I believe it's a mobile gas station. Um, right there on that corner, there was some vandalism that was, uh, taken care of. But, um, we do notice, I've had some residents complain, the sign is now falling down. If we can just please work with Arlington Heights again on that property. Um, I know it's in Arlington Heights, but it is right at the edge of, you know, Rolling Meadows on, um, on our corner. So if we could just keep working with them on keeping that property in within ordinances, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So I, we have communicated with the Village of Arlington Heights Administration on that there are some open impending, uh, building and zoning violations that they're working with the property owner on. So we'll continue to communicate with Arlington Heights on that property and just reaffirm that, uh, we are hearing from individuals and observing that there are some issues that the village may want to, uh, discuss and continue to further pursue with the property owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Alder Person Besessi.
Just I received, uh, quite a few complaints regarding, uh, speeding on Central Road, uh, Cedar Road, Oak Lane, and Birch Lane, uh, in my ward, particularly around the times when school closes or later at night. Um, and, uh, based on the reports I've gotten, um, we're not talking going thirty-five in a, in a twenty-five, we're talking going fifty. Um, so I was hoping that the, uh, whether it be the traffic committee or the police could do, come up with some kind of a, uh, options that we might have, including putting the, uh, you know, the speed things up a little bit more often throughout the ward, um, as well as, uh, patrols around the time school lets out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Person Besessi. And I have something not on the agenda, is Alder Person McHale. Um, um, I have been receiving many, uh, inquiries and concerns about the Lober property as well, and I appreciate, um, the, the residents that came out to speak with us tonight. I was hoping that we might be able to get a uh, communications list of those residents that are interested in keeping up with this property, so that we are not looking for what, or so that they won't have to be searching for when this, um, comes up on their planning and zoning. They're not searching for the blue sign that's gonna go up in front of the property. If we could get, um, maybe a list started, uh, for those residents that are interested in that, just to keep the communications, um, open, that would be appreciated.
Certainly. Yeah, I, I would recommend anyone who would like to be on that list to send an email to admin@cityrm.org. That way, we can start that list and, and maintain information on those email addresses who would like to be on that list.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I flipped the page and now I'm confused. Okay, so that wraps up matters not on the agenda. Uh, so I would like to enter a motion to go into closed session under section two, two C one of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel. Under section two C five of the Opens Meeting Act, re, oh, excuse, two C six, um, of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Land Sales. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alder Person Suneika.
Second.
And Alder Person O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Fabulous. Um, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, uh, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. This meeting is adjourned. Did I do that right?